All right, welcome to a special meeting of the North Andover Zoning Board of Appeals for November 20th, 2025. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, thank you, everybody. So, this is a little bit of a different thing for us, and I think a lot of a different thing for a lot of folks in the room. And so, to get everybody up to speed, we are dealing with a 40B comprehensive permit application. So, normally, business in the zoning board of appeals, people come to us when they are asking for a variance or a special permit relative to our zoning laws. And in those cases, we tend to have a lot of discretion. This 40B is a bit different. So, 40B states that if your town, in this case, North Andover, if we don't have enough designated affordable housing, if we have less than 10%, then developers are allowed to come in to, by law, build, by right, build apartments as long as 25% of those units are designated affordable. And so, we have one such application here today. We are below that what's called safe harbor limit. And so, they have come to us with a proposal and a comprehensive permit application. We do not have the level of discretion that we would normally have in this kind of circumstance. Our consultant, Judy Barrett, who is on her way up from Needham, she has provided us with some helpful posters here that give you an idea of the kind of things that we are allowed to consider and that we are not. And this is going to be a learning experience for all of you, but also for all of us, and will require a little bit of adjustment for how we approach these things. This process, we become, the zoning board is the one-stop-shop for everything. So, instead of the usual process of going to the planning board, going to Conservation Commission, and coming to the zoning board, and others, they just come to us. We deal with all of these things. And so, it is going to be six months. So, we have six months. And then, after that, if we want to extend it, we would need to have a, I believe it's called a waiver, that the applicant and us sign together, agreeing that it should go a bit longer. But six months is normally the term for how long we have to consider all these. And that will include things like traffic and stormwater and civil engineering and others. And we will go through those a little bit more in detail today. I am joined here by our zoning board of appeals members. So, for voting members, I have myself, Michael List, 30 Leanne Drive, I am the chair, Laura Craig Coleman, who's our vice chair, Frank Kilalam, who is our clerk. We have Alexandria Jacobs online, and we have James Testa, who is here with us as well. And then, we have two eligible associate members. We have Zachary Hatchey, who is going to be online, but is not right now, and we have Melissa Rutherford. And then, we are, we have the helpful assistance of several staff. So, we have Mr. Paul Hutchins, who's our building commissioner. We have Terry McNeil, who's our department assistant. We have Gene Enright, who is online and is the director of planning for North Andover, and usually is working with the planning board and has come over to help us for this occasion. And we have Christine O'Connor, who's our town council. And then, on top of all of that, we have some consultants that are here to help as well. So, we have Judy Barrett from the Barrett Planning Group, who, as I said, is on her way up as we speak. And we have Carolyn Murray from KP Law. And you are assisted today by Emily Israel, also from KP Law. And they are here, so Judy Barrett is here to advise us on the process, on the structural elements, on helping us source the right information, work with consultants. Carolyn Murray is here to advise us on legal matters, especially things like what is and is not in the bounds for us to decide. Today's proceedings, so we're going to lead off with a discussion with Carolyn Murray about the 40B process. She'll be able to give you much better and more accurate information than I just gave you. We're also going to have a presentation by the applicant, which should be about 30 minutes, I'm told, where they will go over their proposed plan and why they think that it fits within the bounds of what this provision allows and what the town has set for its planning goals. Gene Enright will present the options for peer reviews. So, the applicant will have come forward with a number of different studies, things like traffic and stormwater, that they feel represent what the situation is. We are given the opportunity to have peer reviews, which are independent consultants that are able to look at those and come to their own judgments. And then, we can all talk about the similarities and differences within. So, she'll talk about some of the options for those. We will then have a period of public comment. I would ask that if you are interested in speaking and you are present in this building, there is a signup sheet over there, and I would love you to sign in. That will help us understand how many folks we have, and also to help keep things orderly so that we're not creating a traffic jam at the microphone. I would also encourage that anyone who is either here or online that wishes to submit written comments, do so to Terry, to T. McNeil, so T.M.A.C.N.E.I.L. at northandoverma.gov. And I, we will not be reading comments that are submitted during the day, during the meeting today, but I promise you that I will make sure all of the board members read it, and that it informs the way that we ask questions going forward and, you know, how we talk about all these things. We've already received a number of comments, and I'm very thankful for those who have submitted those. And I've read through them. I have handed them out to all the committee. And, you know, already I've gotten a sense of some of your concerns, and that will be helpful for me to interact with the applicant. And then, at the end, we will talk about whether our next meeting will be in December or whether we will push out to January. All right, with that, Ms. Murray, would you be up for coming up? Yes?
If you're up for podium or what would be?
I think there is fine, because I think otherwise you end up, it's not ideal, because the podium is kind of in your way, but if you end up there, your back's to the audience. So, I don't think there's a way to win.
Fair enough, fair enough, as long as folks can hear me. Well, thank you. Again, for the record, Carolyn Murray from KP Law, and we are special counsel to the board with respect to this 40B application. And I think you gave a much better outline of the 40B process than you give yourself credit for, Mr. Chair. But I will add a few supplemental things. As you indicated, this is a comprehensive permit, meaning every local permit that this project requires, whether we're talking about something from, you know, as simple as a street opening permit or an earth removal and grading permit, permits that any local board would issue are all going to be issued by this board by virtue of your comprehensive permit. So, I understand from looking at the application, there aren't any wetlands, so it doesn't appear we'd have any reason for involving the Conservation Commission, but to the extent that there are board of health issues or things that ordinarily we would look at through the lens of other boards, it's all on the zoning board of appeals in this context. So, you should have upon receipt of the application, the copy should have gone out to all town departments and boards soliciting some of their comments and feedback. Also, as you alluded to in your introductory remarks, a 40B is a little bit different from what we typically, or what zoning boards typically entertain. For example, if you're typically, if you've got a variance before you, or you've got a special permit application before you, we know by state law, a variance has a very set standard, that you're looking at shape, soil, topography, and hardship. If it's a special permit, we're looking to your bylaw for special permit criteria, or we're altering a pre-existing non-conforming use and looking to see if it's more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure or use. All of that goes by the wayside here. This instead, your standard is really looking at whether or not there is a valid local concern. And as Judy Barrett's chart nicely points out, that's got a specific term of art under chapter 40B, that things that are a valid local concern have to address public health, public safety, environmental factors. So, that's where we get into septic systems, well, stormwater runoff, that type of thing. Open space can be an appropriate consideration. And we also have to make sure that whatever our local rule is that supports that public health or safety concern, that we apply that rule equally to an affordable housing or 40B project as we would to any other project that comes before the town. There are things we cannot consider in the context of a 40B. And again, it was very nice of Judy Barrett to provide that chart to us. So, lots of times when we come to these hearings, and I spend a lot of time at 40B hearings, you always hear about things like, well, how many children are expected to live in this particular development? And what kind of impact is that going to have on our schools? Our schools are already overcrowded. That is not a valid concern in the 40B context. I'm not suggesting that those aren't valid concerns, but they're not something that the zoning board of appeals can consider in this context. Similarly, there's some other types of things, like whether it's rental units versus ownership. The developer has already gone through sort of a pre-screening process through the state, and they've already identified that these will be rental units. That's all factored into, they call their pro forma, their financial analysis of whether or not this could be a financially viable project. Obviously, ownership changes that analysis somewhat, but that is something that the subsidizing agency handles as opposed to the zoning board of appeals. And by subsidizing agency, we mean some agency at the state that has looked at this already and has said, this is a project that we could fund. And in this case, the subsidizing agency is mass housing. So, eventually, whatever this board does with respect to the comprehensive permit, it's ultimately going to go back to the subsidizing agency for them to review and approve the final plans related to this project, assuming it is ultimately approved. One thing that's also different about a 40B versus any other types of applications the board typically entertains is the concept of waivers. Waivers, you know, some people sometimes refer to them as variances, and they are somewhat alike in that it is essentially, the developer is asking for an exception from your zoning bylaw that is necessary for them to be able to build this project. It is common and required for developers to submit a list of all waivers with their application. And that list of waivers may change as the project and the hearing goes along. Some waivers may no longer be necessary with a design tweak, others might be added, that's fine. But ultimately, this board will have to vote on those waivers. And I think what's perhaps most important for, or different perhaps for folks to understand is that what 40B allows a developer to do is essentially override all of your local zoning and all of your local bylaws or requirements to the extent that this board grants them. So, I'm not saying that just because the developer has submitted a list of waivers, you are not by any means obligated to grant all of them or any of them, but it is possible that there could be some significant deviations from normal zoning requirements. That's typical of any 40B project. And one other thing that is a little bit different than your normal process, most of your applications that you would entertain would require a supermajority vote. 40B only requires a simple majority vote of this board. And with that, I see that Jody Barrett has joined us, so I don't know if she might have anything that she'd like to add.
I have a feeling you have probably covered it just fine. Thank you.
Do any members of the board have any questions for Ms. Murray? And so, regarding the length of time of this process, I mentioned before that it was six months. So, what happens at the end of six months if not all of the peer reviews are resolved, for example?
I would imagine that we will be asking for more time of the applicant. And it may very well be that even the applicant asks for more time, because there's a lot of back and forth, as you know, particularly with respect to the engineering and stormwater issues. We're heading into a holiday season that automatically gums up the works usually. So, I've never known a 40B to actually finish in the six months that the regulations provide for. So, there's two things we'd want to keep our eye on is not just the, you know, say, the amount of time, you know, we will, we will continue this hearing from month to month, or, you know, maybe we'll be skipping January, as you mentioned. But we've got to keep our eye on that 180 days as well. Sometimes, for example, if it's going, if let's suppose there might be an unusually long break between meetings, maybe because something has to, as a result of a peer review report, maybe the applicant has decided they've got to significantly revise their engineering plans, and that's going to take some time to get those revised plans back to you. It's not uncommon for the applicant to not only request a continuance of the hearing, but to also say they're willing to also extend the 180 days for the board, so that you're not being shortchanged, basically, by any delays that should naturally occur.
Anything else?
I mean, I imagine I'll have many more questions as the process continues.
And I will be here.
Well, and on that note, I think that's an important piece. So, you know, the Ms. Murray and Ms. Barrett have been very helpful interacting with me thus far, but they are available to all board members. You know, there are certain conversations that we cannot have outside of this meeting room as a board, but you can have any conversation you like with them. And so, I would encourage all of you to avail yourselves of their abilities. They are extremely knowledgeable, and so, don't hesitate to go to them with questions. You could also come to me with questions to ask them, whichever way works best for you. But they are here to help us and to help us work through this, and they are very experienced in that.
Do we have their contact information, or?
You should, but I will make sure you guys all have that tonight, just in case you don't, yes. And then, in terms of other resources, Mr. Shapiro mentioned to me that we now have the website set up. And so, we have, we have, if you go to the North Andover Zoning Board webpage, the permit application in its entirety is posted there. And so, you'll be able to look at the plans, you'll be able to look at the reports for traffic and stormwater and others. And so, I encourage folks to take a look at that, because that will help, you know, it'll help get you into the details. You know, we will have a presentation that will go over things on a high level, but there's a lot of meat in there. This binder was given to us, and this has executive summaries of multiples of those reports. So, the actual text goes even longer than that. There's a lot to dig into here. Yeah, all right. Well, with that, one last thing is just a note on attendance for the board members. One way in which this is a little bit different is that typically, we do meetings entirely in person. And, but then, if someone misses a meeting, they can catch up by following notes and by looking, by watching online. That is different here. So, here, we have decided to make these meetings hybrid, which means that members can attend either in-person or online. I will endeavor to be here every time to help direct traffic, but board members have the ability to do either. However, if they miss more than one meeting, they will not be eligible to vote. So, we will insist that folks keep coming, just so that we make sure that we have enough voting members. That is, I've been informed, a thing that other boards have run into in the past, where they do not have enough members to vote, and that creates some problems. So, we would like to avoid that. All right. Well, with that, I would like to invite Mr. Smolak from our applicants, from Zero Prescott Street, to come present.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and other members of the board. For the record, John Smolak, the firm of Smolak &amp; Vaughan, 120 Water Street, North Andover, representing the applicant to East Mill Housing. Before we get started, our presentation, what I'd like to do is introduce you to members of the project team, some of whom will hear this evening. First, we have David Steinberg, principal with RCG, as well as East Mill Housing, Phil Henry of Civil Design Group, our project civil engineer, Ed Bradford, and June Zeringer of the architectural team, our project architect. And there are other team members, if we could move the slide a bit forward. Thanks, Terry. One more, please. Thank you. And there are other team members listed on the project team that are here with us this evening because of the fact that what we thought would be important this evening is just to provide a general overview of the project, to get the board accustomed to the parameters of the project. And we can always dig into additional details in subsequent hearings at the board's discretion. And so, the other members of the team that aren't here this evening are Jeffrey Dirk of Vinasen Associates, our traffic engineer, Natalie Adams of Verdant Landscape Architecture, our landscape architect, as well as Lynn Sweet of LDS Consulting, our project affordable housing consultant. And so, as I indicated for this evening, what we'd like to do is make an introductory presentation on Zero Prescott, and to really get the board and the public, sort of, give them a definition of the parameters of the project itself, and then discuss how this project is, has evolved in the context of the planning that has gone on by RCG over the past 18 years since they acquired East Mill in 2007. And then, beyond that, discuss the general characteristics of the project and give you the basics on the project itself. And then, happy to take any questions that you may have this evening from the board and from the public. And I think in terms of the presentation this evening, actually, before we get to our presentation, as to the application that's filed with the board, we file what we believe is a complete application that complies with the requirements of chapter 40B and the state regulations at 760 CMR 56, as well as the board's board of appeals comprehensive permit rules. And in terms of what's been filed as part of the application includes a project eligibility letter that was mentioned by the chair. And that project eligibility letter was issued in September 16th of this year. And that letter does indicate that the project is eligible for a subsidy under the Federal Home Loan Bank of Boston's New England Fund Program, where mass housing is the project administrator. And that letter also confirms, based on mass housing's own valuation of the project, that the site of the proposed project is generally appropriate for the residential development, that the conceptual project design is generally appropriate for the site on which it's located, and that the proposed project appears financially feasible based upon an evaluation of market rents in the North Andover area. And lastly, that the applicant controls the site by virtue of a purchase agreement between the applicant and the record owner of the property, RCG North Andover Mills LLC. I also wanted to acknowledge the comments that were delivered by the town as part of the project eligibility letter application process, and that we intend to address those comments as we go through the subsequent hearings as well. And in addition to the application contents, which are spelled out in the 40B regulations, we have included a set of preliminary site plans, including civil, architectural, landscaping, utility plans, tabulation of units, a project eligibility letter, which we discussed, and a preliminary list of requested waivers from local requirements that are in your materials as well. And we also included a full traffic report in the formal application, as well as a full stormwater report. And lastly, I did want to note that yesterday, we had a town technical review committee meeting, again, yesterday morning, with department heads and other officials from the town, where we received some very helpful feedback and which we could report in on at a later date as well. And so, with that said, what I'd like to do is introduce David Steinberg, the principal of the applicant, and turn the discussion over to David. Although David's been involved with this project since 2007, it's been mostly before the planning board and the Conservation Commission. And so, we thought it'd be very helpful to start out with a little bit of background about RCG before we get into the details of the project. So, with that said, I'll turn the discussion over to David.
Thanks, John. Steinberg, principal of RCG LLC, and representing the applicant, East Mill Housing LLC.
Feel free to move the microphone if you need to as well, so you don't have to lean the whole time.
Yeah. So, a little bit about myself and the company. East Mill Housing LLC is an entity that would be the owner developer of this particular project. RCG LLC is a real estate investment management development company based in Somerville, Mass. We've been the sponsors for RCG North Andover Mills LLC, who owns the East Mill side of the street, RCG West Mill NA LLC, who owns the West Mill side of the street. Our background is, we were founded in 1982, and have bought, sold, developed, invested in all kinds of properties, mostly mixed-use and multifamily housing. We do have offices around the Boston area and in Providence, Rhode Island, Asheville, Wilmington, North Carolina, Denver, Colorado. And we currently own and manage about 1,000 residential units and 1 million square feet of commercial space. I have been, as John said, working on this project since 2007, actually, January of 2007, so almost 19 years now. Now, if we go to the next slide, please. So, to give a little of the background, this site was the site of the Davidson-Furburn Machine Shops. That was a company that started on this site in the 1830s for about 150 years. You can sort of see a picture there from 1908 of the West Mill and East Mill buildings that were going up. Pretty dense development there, you know, heavy industrial work, making machinery for the textile mills. In the 1980s, those mills were closed, emptied out, bought by a developer called Brickstone Properties, environmentally cleaned up, and the whole campus was repurposed as a professional office campus, primarily for large, single users. And over the 80s, 90s, and before we became involved, the campus was actually split up. I had a couple of master tenants, the first of which essentially vacated East Mill in the early 2000s. That went into distress, and we bought it in 2007. And the West Mill, which had tenants through the period of about 2014, we bought that. Those were, again, large professional office tenants that were relocating away, would have delivered empty buildings there. So, and I think you can go to the next slide, please, Terry. When we first became involved with the East Mill in 2007, we were dealing with sort of distressed, empty mill buildings. And our program at that time, we worked closely with the planning department, the planning board, went to town meeting. We did a planned development district that was, took up the concept of introducing housing to the site, and that it would be more successful as a mixed-use community, that those buildings could be repurposed and more economically viable as a mixed-use, and that there are other benefits that balanced out the uses. So, it wasn't entirely reliant on a professional workforce, certain corporate tenants that could come and go, that, you know, everybody arrived at nine in the morning and left at five in the evening, and created certain backups in traffic, and a lot of need for paving and parking lots. And that's how this parking lot was ultimately built in the 1980s to accommodate over 600 vehicles, which at that time, with a full campus, was necessary. We worked at that time on certain master planning principles that I think turned out to be pretty successful, which was to essentially extend the downtown, introduce a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week community, target a mix of uses, and not even just thinking about residential versus commercial. And actually, at that time, we had a heavier residential use intended for the buildings, but flexibility in the uses, so that professional office was more like maybe restaurants, maybe medical offices, maybe other things. was more like maybe restaurants, maybe medical offices, maybe other things that were not objectionable to the town's goals for what they wanted in their downtown, or the impact on the neighborhood. And so we have a pretty diverse community now, as far as the uses of the buildings. They are about 95% full, even on the office side now, with a pretty distressed office market, and a variety of other uses. The goals of the town at that time, which I think have been pretty successful over the eighteen years that I've been here, were to start to make pedestrian links between this campus, the downtown. We added parking on High Street, we added other sort of mitigation and amenities through to create our own community there in the downtown. I should say, RCG also bought 93 Elm Street and the one Elm Court townhomes behind that, and has redeveloped that. We originally also bought 100 Elm Street on the other corner, that one we sold off in the past couple of years. So we really worked hard on creating this neighborhood on this site, and I think the town stated master plan goals and housing production plan at the time really supported this type of use for this campus. I think you can go to the next slide. When we first started in 2007, you can see an image there of what was the master plan that we worked on and got approved with the planning board at the time, which included redeveloping the existing mill buildings, and then introducing a couple new buildings over time, including one building that runs along the pond, which you can see there and was eventually built, and a reuse of the garage. So on the right side of that picture, sort of southeast on plan, you can see what was anticipated to be multifamily housing and the location of where the garage is now, and that represents sort of the footprint of the garage at the time. And that was all going to be done under a planned development district overlay, special permit. If you can go to the next slide. In 2014, the west side of the campus, which is sort of outlined there in the blue, became available because Schneider Electric and Converse both announced they were leaving the campus. And you can see there, there's actually a large, single-story building in the middle of the site, that was a little over 80,000 square feet, that was part of that office complex. We took that building down to create more open space, parking landscaped areas, and then eventually redeveloped the areas out on where the parking lots, the more remote parking in the ballfields were.
I just need to pause you really quick. Terry, I think you may need to plug in your computer, or else we're going to run into disaster here, so.
Good idea.
I just want to...
I have an eye on this.
Terry, you might need to...
Yeah, I think you might need to re-plug it in over closer here.
I figured I wanted to... Terry, exactly that.
Yeah.
Apologies for the delay. I think your computer died.
Her screen is up.
Was there? From that?
We are back. All right, please resume, sir.
Yep, sorry, so getting back to that, we approached that campus with the same principle, mixed-use. We actually worked with the town at that time on a rezoning of the whole mill campus. There were lots of pre-existing non-conforming uses, there were lots of challenges with some of the uses we were trying to introduce, and we went to town meeting with that, got the zone, the Mill Sub District A zoning, which is the existing zoning now on the site. All right, if you can go to the next slide, please. So after we did that initial permitting, removed the manufacturing building in the middle of the site, that's when we subdivided the West Mill plan, and we added, or Avalon Bay permitted and added 170 apartment units to the campus on that side of the street. If you can go to the next slide. After we completed that subdivision, we also permitted a subdivision on the East Mill side of the street, which you can see here, and that process where the driveway was sort of turned into a subdivision road that hammer-headed into Lot 1, which is the historic mill buildings, Lot 2, which is where we had anticipated putting an apartment building, and at that time, we ended up selling that lot to Avalon Bay so they could add 51 units to their campus, and that was built on that lot. And it left Lot 3 to remain, which was exclusively used as parking since then. So Lot 3, right now, has a two-story parking garage with about 600 parking spaces, and a surface lot of a little over 100 spaces, and then, as you can see, some open space on the site there. So if you can go to the next slide now. And so having, you know, filled up the buildings and the mill buildings and completed the apartment building on Lot 2, we've come to the point where, over the long term, we've realized that garage is really underutilized, and that eventually we're going to do something with that site, now is the time we'd like to do something with that site. And this is sort of a big picture, sorry, it's a little blurry, trying to pull the image, but this is part of what we submitted for the project eligibility letter to say, we have a site here, we think it's a good fit for multifamily housing, we think it'd be a good fit for the 40B application process. And we received that project eligibility letter, as John said, in September. So next slide, please. So big picture, I'll give some of the outline of the characteristics of it to get everybody familiar with at this point, and I have Ed Bradford from TAT here, and Phil Henry from Civil Design Group to expand upon any questions on the specifics there. But it's a six-acre site about, this project proposes 296 residential apartments, you can see the breakdown there, 25% of those are 74 units, would be restricted, affordable at 80% of AMI. It would be constructed as essentially three buildings, one building with 150 units in it, it's four to five stories, a parking garage of 397 spaces, that's about four or five stories, and then a second building attached to the other side of the garage, that'd be another 146 units. So the site itself would have 296 units and 497 parking spaces when you include the surface spaces that are on the lot. The height, we talk about four or five stories because we're really built into a pretty steep grade on that hill, so facing back toward the mills, we're going downhill toward where the brook used to be, where the mill ponds are. That would look like five stories from that side, and then as you're going up the hill into the residential neighborhood, it looks like four stories. That Sub District A on that lot does cross over two historical zoning zones, one was the industrial S-zone, which was associated with the mills, and one was the R4-zone, which was associated more with the residential neighborhood up the hill. And this project spans both of those. As far as open space on the site, you can see from the images that the garage takes up a lot of space right now, sort of a big white rectangle from above, that garage is currently about two, little over two acres itself. And the way we've designed this project was there is a slight increase in the footprint of the buildings versus the garage, but not a lot different, and the other paved areas are actually reduced a little bit, a little less parking spaces on the rest of the site. And so the lot coverage remains about 50%, which is about what it is now. And we've done extensive stormwater design, we know there's a history of flooding through this site, the, there's some mitigation that is part of that report that I assume we'll spend more time on, but the stormwater essentially will be upgraded as we do this, so there'll be less risk of flooding after the project than there is now. Water, sewer, and really all other major utilities exist into the site already, and so this would be tying into those utilities, water, sewer, electric. We're planning to do an all-electric building, although there is gas running into the site now. We are out of the wetlands, we are out of the flood plain, we are actually out of the historic neighborhood there, the Machine Shop Village Neighborhood Conservation District. If you can go to the next slide, please. We talked about that we're not going to go into the details of the traffic reports, a multi-hundred-page report, it's very technical, I can give, you know, sort of an overview of, you know, what we'll be presenting later, but the traffic engineers did all the counts, you know, studied the nearby intersections, followed all the DOT guidelines and the industry standards. Their ultimate executive summary, which is in your binders as part of the submittal, did end up coming to the conclusion that there's not going to be a significant impact on the traffic in the neighborhood caused by this project. They also, you know, did some analysis of lines of sight, they did have some recommendations for some offset improvements for, you know, add an enunciator for pedestrian crossing, they had some recommendations about how to help mitigate any traffic impacts, and we'd follow those, but we're waiting to hear more back from peer review, make sure we're all on the same page about our understanding of the traffic and the impact on the traffic. They also did a third-party review against national standards on the way we approach parking on this site, which will be maybe new to this board, but when we did all our permitting with the planning board, a special permit was established for shared parking on this site. So the site has well over 1,000 spaces now, and will continue to have over 1,000 spaces when this project's over. But because the balance of uses now between commercial and residential users, we have a shared parking principle that in general residential residents are using the parking in the evenings and night, and on weekends, and in general, the commercial users are using them during the daytime, during weekdays. That has played out pretty much as expected on the site, that's why we have a parking lot now that we essentially don't use. There are 600 parking spaces, the top has been literally barricaded off for an extended period of time now, and the covered parking, which is obviously desirable to many of our tenants, you know, still is very underutilized, maybe 50 spaces or something at almost peak times for that. So we've established there's not really a great need for the parking there, but we asked that the engineers, who are experts in that as well, study it, compare it against other standards, make sure it's, we're making a reasonable argument, which is to say, we're providing enough parking according to the current zoning on this site for all the residential units we are adding, but that some of that would be shared with our commercial users during daytime hours, in the typical way we've been doing a shared parking approach over the last seventeen or eighteen years there. If you can go to the next slide. You know, I think what's important here is to understand that this parking lot is underutilized, it's in poor condition, and it was always intended to be converted to multifamily housing in sun form. We think it's a really good place for multifamily housing, we have lots of amenities there for residential, for residents, we are close to lots of the town's offices, schools, restaurants, retail, there's access pretty close by to some public transportation. So we have lots of utility infrastructure that's already in place that we can tap into, and there's really a community, this is a part of town that really can support having more residents and contributing to the economic development of this part of town and the successes that we've had to date. Another thing I think is important to remember with this site is that there are buildings here that have been four and five stories for the last 150 years, and, you know, we've made an effort, and I think Ed can go a little bit into that, to try to make the buildings contextual with what the other buildings on the site are and have been for a long time. And on top of all that, we can get the town to their 10% with this project, in one fell swoop, that it supports the density here, it supports enough affordable housing to get the town over its 10%, so it's a really good fit for the town's housing goals here. If you can go to the next slide, this is just a contextual image of the location of the site. We shared this in the project eligibility letter for people from out of town to understand sort of where this is located and how convenient a lot of services are, and where the public transportation is, and where the parks are, and that you can follow the Mills to Hills Trail all the way out to Wire Hill from our site, so again, making the case that this is a really good place for multifamily housing. If you can go to the next slide, there are certain goals that were already established by the town that we think we align with here. One of the great things about introducing apartments to these neighborhoods is that it gives more options for seniors to downsize into from the local housing supply, and for young professionals to upsize into. As we stated before, it allows us to introduce a bunch of affordable housing, the people that are making 80% of AMI will have rents that are limited to rents that they can afford, as dictated by the state's guidelines. As we mentioned before, it meets with the housing production goals that will bring the town into long-term compliance with the goal of 10%. It's also, when you look at the town's master plan goals, and what we agree with, is that it's producing housing that supports the commercial health of this area. So one of the things we've really always hoped for and intended is to bring more people into the mill area, into the downtown, to help support all the businesses that we have there. And I think some of these other goals that we stated before that I've already talked about, about having infrastructure and being a walkable part of the community. And I think from there, I was going to hand it off to Ed to talk a little bit about how we came up with the design for the buildings and how they fit on the site.
Thanks, Dave. Good evening, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. Again, for the record, Ed Bradford, I'm a Principal with TAT Architect on the project, and as Dave noted, I have a short presentation to walk you through the site design and the architectural design. If we could just go to the next slide, please. Dave covered the existing conditions to some extent, but I can layer on a little bit of information for you concerning those existing conditions. So this exhibit shows an aerial of the site, the dark line bounds the six acres of the site, and as Dave noted, this site sits at the intersection of two really distinct contexts, and these contexts, as we'll walk through our design, have greatly informed the design. And those contexts, again, as Dave noted, to the south is the industrial fabric of the historic mill district that Dave just walked through the history of, and then to the north, of course, is a smaller-scale adjacent residential neighborhood that we, of course, need to consider in our design. The site, again, is just over six acres, and as Dave noted, the existing garage, right at the center there, is just about two acres, so about a third of the site. There isn't any particular sort of constructed landscape open space to speak of on the site, but importantly, there is an existing natural buffer in the northeast corner that we've worked hard during our design, the team has worked very hard to retain the majority of that, the majority of that buffer. Next slide, please. So this slide shows our proposed site plan, and again, as Dave noted, the area of our proposed building, residential buildings and garage, as a floor area measurement, is essentially the same as the existing garage, so the existing garage is, as noted, is essentially the same size. What we have with this residential building and garage is a floor that's about 4,000 square feet larger than the two acres of the existing garage. But, of course, in order to craft a residential building appropriate for the site, there's been, of course, a different proposal here. Still at the center is a garage, as Dave noted, 397 spaces, and then there's additional 100 spaces in a surface parking lot just south or below the existing building, but of course, that garage is much more compact in its footprint because it's five levels, parking spaces and levels stacked atop one another. To the left and the right of the garage, the central garage, are the two residential buildings, Building 1 on the left, as Dave noted, 150 units, and Building right, I'm sorry, Building 2 on the right, 146 units. And unlike the existing condition, open space is something that we... And unlike the existing condition, open space is something that we, of course, we've considered as an amenity for residents and considering buffers and edges of the project. An integral to both of the buildings, the residential building one and residential building two, are two central courtyards that you can see, kind of U-shaped buildings, one and two, with that courtyard for each, serving as a central amenity and focal point for residents in those buildings. And then I would also note that the configuration of the U-shaped building and those central courtyards is also quite strategic. Rather than wrapping the courtyard with four walls, we open up the courtyard east and west. And that's an important adjustment so that as we address the neighborhood, the residential neighborhood on Prescott and to the west, that we don't have a long wall, but rather what appears as two separate buildings with the courtyard in between, again, to try to break down the scale of the building. And then the other thing I should note while we're on this exhibit and this site plan is we've also been careful to configure really all of the activity, all of the action, if you will, on the south side of the building. So that 100 space, surface parking lot shown in gray there on the bottom of the site, new building just above that, you can see three red triangles. Those represent entry to the building. Primary entry and exit from the garage is to the south of the building, as well as the main lobby pedestrian access, east and west. One entry into the main lobby and amenity leasing space for building one on the left, and another one kind of mirroring that for building two on the opposite side of the garage. So pedestrian vehicular access, including service traffic associated with move-ins and trash, all of that is pulled to the south side facing the Mill District with the goal of keeping the residential side as quiet as we can make it. Next slide, please. So this shows the ground floor, and in this color-coded floor plan, maybe illustrates it even a little clearer about what I was just noting about the organization of the spaces within the floor plan. So again, this is the first floor plan, meeting the ground. Again, the activity, as you can see in color, our amenity space is shown in this sort of peach or beige color. So again, building one, U-shaped building on the left, building two on the right, each with its central courtyard amenity. But again, all entry and access to speak of is on the south side of the building, facing the Mills District. For building one, that space is a bit larger than the building two space. That's because it has, it's associated with the leasing space as well. So think of that as kind of the main entry for prospects or folks that may be coming to rent an apartment home here. That's about 5,200 square feet of amenity in building one. And then on the right-hand side, building two, there's additional amenity, about 2,600 square feet. And then you can tell from the color how there's a kind of a connection from the front or south side of the building through to those central courtyards. So we think of these, they'll be certainly pretty active spaces. We think wonderful spaces for residents to enjoy the interior amenities and have direct connection front and rear, if you will, to the backyard of that amenity courtyard. The dwelling units are organized in a pretty traditional way with a central loaded corridor. They're shown in the various shades of blue that represent the different types of apartment homes that we have, as Dave noted from studio, up through three-bedroom apartment home types. And then I guess the last thing I'd note while on this plan is just the configuration of the building, again, with this central garage. It's what you may have heard of as a wrap configuration. It's with a garage, in this case, a five-level precast concrete garage, likely in the center of the building, kind of wrapped by the apartment home. So that gets you a lot of parking that's mostly disguised by the building to minimize the kind of visual impact of that garage. And it's a very convenient model for residents as well. Each resident essentially has parking on their floor because the parking levels align with the residential floors. Next slide, please. So these next couple of slides just give you a quick tour of the existing conditions, which I'm sure most folks know. Kind of the context on all sides of the building. Starting in the upper-left-hand corner is a view kind of from the entry from High Street, showing that existing two-level East Mill Garage. Top row center is, again, that lower-scale residential context on Prescott Street. Upper right and lower left are the two Avalon Bay apartment buildings that Dave noted, more recent developments. And then, of course, lower right, and we could have expanded the number of views of the existing historic Mills and later Mill Buildings, but that's primarily a context to the south that we're responding to. And then a sort of a little bit closer view of a few of those buildings. And these are precedents that definitely inform our approach to the architecture. The more historic Mill in the upper-left-hand corner, kind of later, brick Mill, a building that's informed by the Mills in the upper-right-hand corner. And then the two Avalon Bay Buildings on the bottom row that we think are an approach to successfully integrate a newer building into this Mill context. So we have a couple renderings. Again, as I noted, we kind of have this dual context that we're looking to address here. There's the context of the Mills. And this is a view of that same entry drive from High Street approaching the buildings. It's sort of hard to capture the entire building, but we wanted to get a view that showed the whole building from building one on the left all the way to building two on the right. And you can see that central garage just about shifted off to the right-hand side of the image. Again, this would be the Mill-facing exposure, so this would be the five-story portion of the building. And you can see the approach we've taken with the masonry is to have these sort of moments, important exposures, where the architecture relates to the brick architecture of the Mills so that that happens at this end cap as you approach, at each of the entries to the buildings, the building one just to the left of the garage and building two just to the right. And then opposite, most remote in this image, would be another brick end cap. But these are residential buildings. We want to respond to the Mill architecture, but of course, the residential images. And we want to do what we can to break up the massing. So we have introduced a more residential texture in between those brick portions, and that has a more traditional clapboard pattern in various colors, again, with the strategy to break up the massing. And then in this view, I think you can see the bit more active streetscape here. So of course, a new pedestrian connection down to High Street to make a connection to those amenities that Dave noted. And that connection would, of course, travel up and connect folks to the main entries and lobbies of each of the buildings. And then again, we just have two views for you tonight just to capture as an overview the design. This is a view from Prescott, kind of looking down the hill, if you will. Existing buildings, homes on the left and on the right. But in this particular case, on the neighborhood edge, we took a little bit different approach. And as Dave noted, we use the topography, existing topography, to our advantage here. Because the building is set into the hill, essentially what is the first floor on the Mill side of the building is buried on this side of the building. So as Dave noted, that presents a one-story less of an exposure to the residential homes. But given the scale of the homes, we've taken that a step further, and you can see that in this view, and there's an additional step back in the wing that is facing Prescott. So again, and as far as the materials go, more of a residential texture. The brick, for the most part, goes away when we're fronting on the residential neighborhood, more of a residential texture, materials that are familiar to the neighborhood, clapboard and the like. And then some variation in the color and pattern to give interest and again, to break up the massing of the buildings. And then finally, I have to finish off. I have a couple sections to kind of describe in a little bit more detail just how we're proposing to set these buildings into the context and relate to the neighborhood edge. So this building is kind of, in the upper-right-hand corner, you can see in a red line where we have kind of cut this section through the site in the neighborhood just to the north. So that is a section through building one. If I work from the left-hand side of the section, that's the portion of the building that's closest to the Mill side of the site, if you will. You can see a taller lobby space that represents the main entry to the building, and the residential floors above that, that important courtyard at the center that, again, is a focal point for all of the apartment homes and is an outdoor amenity for folks. But you can see, as Dave noted, set into the hill, that lowest floor now is essentially cut into the hill. So what is a five-story building on the front becomes a four-story building in the rear. And then as well, the existing home, this particular one, is set at a higher elevation, so that as well contributes to some lessening of the apparent height of the project because of its vantage point, of course, sitting higher than the building. So we gave, just for reference, some elevations of the heights of the building. Our elevation is essentially three feet higher approximately than the highest point of the adjacent home. And then next slide, please, and final slide. This is another section, again, to show how we have worked with the existing condition and craft the massing to set into the existing neighborhood. This is cutting in a sort of east-west fashion across Prescott. So again, in this direction as well, using the existing topography to our advantage, the building is again set into the grade or cut into the hill, if you will, so that the exposure on Prescott is one story less than that facing the Mills. But this home, this particular one at 24 Prescott, doesn't set up quite as high as the section that I just showed. So this is an area where we've taken an additional step and shown a step back in the building. And you can see where elevation 145 on our proposed building steps back one story below the higher roof. And again, that's to try to get some alignment with the face of our building or the height of our building as it relates to the street and the existing homes. That's a quick summary of the architecture and happy to take some questions.
Does anyone from the board have any questions?
So is the garage, it's an open-air garage?
It is, yeah.
Do the headlights be shining out onto the houses on Prescott Street? I wasn't quite sure of the alignment of that side of the garage facing Prescott.
Typically, on the garages, there would be a spandrel panel associated with the edge of the garage that would cut off the headlights. So that would be our plan. But it would be an open-air garage as well, so open air above that height to get the cross-ventilation and meet the building code requirements for an open garage.
Okay. Is the orientation, though, facing the houses on Prescott?
It faces the houses just above it, yes, so like 39 Prescott.
Okay.
If you go back.
Might be set back further than it shines more at the trees in the back corner, I think.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to, I think.
Yeah, I think all of the trees on the left side, on the west side are being removed.
The section?
Maybe a top view.
Maybe another.
The site plan.
Yeah. That one might be helpful.
Slide 18.
Slide 18.
Sorry, one before that one, I think is even a little bit better.
Yeah, so like on that.
So it's not facing directly at Prescott, it's more at the trees, right?
Yeah. Very left side.
But it's five levels high, though, so.
Right.
I think the one house will have no tree cover between it and the garage.
Garage.
Or the side of the building. And to be, just to make sure I understood the diagrams from the binder correctly, the back edge of the building is 16 feet further than the current existing footprint of the garage?
I think the, we might have.
Or was it 16 feet from the?
16 and a half feet off the corner of the property line back to the garage, back to the new garage.
Gotcha.
Extends a little bit beyond the existing garage as well, so that's a point taken as well. We'll go, we'll.
Yeah. The existing garage is.
Extend beyond the footprint of the existing garage a little bit, and I think the setback from that corner is 16 feet.
Gotcha, yeah, that's right, 16 feet from that closest corner. And.
Yeah, the existing garage is about 40 feet from that corner.
Yeah.
Right, so it would add about 25 feet.
Be 25 feet closer to.
Towards the line.
And four stories higher.
Yep.
I couldn't tell on the floor plan, is there direct access from the garage to each level of the apartment buildings?
There is, yeah.
You said it's going to be an all-electric building?
That's the plan, yes.
I just know, so you're using all heat pumps?
That's what it said in the plan.
Yeah, that'd be our expectation.
I just know, well, this isn't, probably not. I know some of the heat pumps need supplemental heat, and you can either do with that with electrical resistance or gas, which is more efficient. So I didn't know if you might use gas for that.
Yeah, typically, we've been trying not to add gas to any of our newer buildings as we develop that, just sort of having a forward-looking approach to fossil fuels and trying to keep our buildings all-electric at this point.
Would there be open space on the roof of the building that could be solar in the future, or is that?
Yes, yeah, yeah. In fact, in our application, we do show zones for solar PV on the roof. So solar-ready is the plan.
You're not trying to do anything extra, like go to the passive house level of design?
No, the intent wasn't to go that far. But trying to be as environmentally friendly as we can and also trying to, you know, hedge a little bit because some of this is engineering.
You can grab the microphone.
Some of the little bit of hedging is the engineering of the building and the power supply to the building. And we believe there's sufficient power to do everything we want to add solar. We've added solar on a lot of those Mill Buildings. And we think this would be a really good location for that, to put solar panels on top of the building. And we think, you know, we can do this all-electric.
Do the courtyards play any role in, like, the more infrastructural or utilitarian aspects of the site? Like, is there, are there drainage areas that are incorporated into those courtyards or trash collection or other, like, sort of mundane aspects that are important about the courtyard? Or is new courtyards, are those for peace of mind of the residents only? Which is also important, which is curious.
Yeah, just, so trash is handled actually in the garage building, in this case. So there'll be trash chutes and a trash compactor and trash will be handled in and out of the garage. Just kind of being to have the open-air garage and keep it out of the residential areas. The courtyards, yes, are an amenity space for the tenants, but are also an opportunity to create some stormwater mitigation, which is in the stormwater plan.
Right.
Primarily on the courtyard of building one. Phil Henry, our site engineer is here as well, can answer more specifically if you want more details on that. But yeah, having, you know, more open space has a lot of benefits to working with with stormwater management in general.
So that stormwater upgrade that you're looking into or got a plan to do, is that just north of the Avalon Building? Or is it going to support the current Mill, the issues we had a few years ago?
So this entire site is uphill from the rest of the Mill site. Right now, the footprint of the garage all drains into that swale that's between the two levels of parking you're familiar with the site. So from the edge of this Lot 3, looking downhill, there's sort of a green space to the edge of the lot line, and then there's more parking lots. That green space is where the garage drains into now and then ties into other pipes that tie into our pipes at the low point of the street. So by upgrading the stormwater management on the site, we're able to slow down and pull some of that around away from the single location where it all has to dump out and create.
create a lot of pressure in a flood or heavy storm situation. There are a lot of other factors related to watershed study that we've done with the town and other infrastructure failures that had to do with that flood that were off-site, some of which were off-site that, you know, we think we've actually dealt with to a good extent now already. But there are opportunities in putting up this new building and taking down that garage to improve that water flow, which basically streams downhill from the neighborhood through our site now, gets captured and then goes into pipes to go downstream.
And this would slow that down by adding, like, retention tanks and things like that and allowing for some infiltration into the ground as it goes.
When you folks were considering this design, was moving the parking underground an option that you thought about?
Yeah, I would say we've done a few studies over the years. Our intent was not to be digging out the hill more than it's already been dug out. So the existing garage, so the base level of this building is essentially the base level of the garage that's there now. So it doesn't require us to really be digging out the hill. We had, you know, some concerns about how that would impact the hillside and the groundwater and other things that have to do with stormwater mitigation. And we also just felt like this was a better design to put a garage in between where we could have people leaving the garage, getting out directly onto their floors and having a garage that's wrapped, rather than trying to push it all into a hill and create other issues with underground parking that we've encountered in other projects.
We've got some members online. Do any of them wish to weigh in with some additional questions? Yes, we need to figure out the audio.
So I do have one question. I just want to understand, does the current applicant still own the property that Avalon Bay is currently located on?
No. No, the lots, both the East Mill side and West Mill side, had subdivision plans that were permitted. Those lots were sold to Avalon Bay, and they own those lots now.
Okay.
Melissa, did you have a question?
Melissa, your microphone's not quite coming in. Oh, she unmuted for a minute and it still didn't come through. So it might be a technical problem. So I want to give you guys a preview because, you know, obviously, we're going to get into much deeper conversations as this goes on, but I think there's a few things that I really want us to be able to focus on in these conversations. And I think first and foremost is the neighbors, right? So I would say in particular, 39 Prescott Street is very, very close. All right, Melissa said you had no questions. Is very, very close to the property line, and it's very, very close to the parking lot. And, you know, I certainly, it was hinted at earlier, like, I have in my head the image of headlights coming in at 11:00 at night, 12:00 at night, and casting onto that property. And so I worry about how close that is. It is 25 feet closer than the building is currently, and as my vice chair noted, about, you know, it's another four stories up. And so I'm very anxious about that, but also the other neighbors across Prescott Street. And so I know you gave us a little bit of a preview of some of that discussion that will come, but, you know, that will be, to me, a substantial focus. Next one is stormwater. I think we all know that this area has experienced some severe flooding. And as much as that was, you know, called a, I think it was called a century event, century events are becoming more common. And so we shouldn't assume that they are as unlikely as they are. And I know you said that there would be improvements. I have not dug fully into your stormwater report, but I look forward to doing that and talking in depth about ways that we can improve the runoff situation. Thankfully, you know, because this is already a heavily paved area, we're not creating more impermeable land, it looks like, or at least not much more than what we had before. But I think we can all agree that the runoff situation in that area is not adequate as it stands right now. And so that, I would love this to be an opportunity to improve that substantially. Next one, and the thing that I heard overwhelmingly in comments so far that I've gotten in emails and voicemails, is traffic. You know, I know you have your traffic report. I looked at the executive, you know, report on that, executive summary on that. It suggested that while time spent at intersections and in traffic won't substantially increase by year calculations, the overall flow of traffic will increase by about 15% at its highest points in its most dense areas. We should talk about what the implications of that mean. I would also like to, if possible, and this will be a discussion that we have when we get to our traffic review, discuss the way that these predictions went down from the Avalon construction, right? What was predicted when Avalon was built and how has the actual traffic been represented following that? And that, I think, will give us some idea of how we think about these predictions and how accurate they might be. And then the last one is parking. You know, we're, I know you mentioned that this building has not been heavily used. We are still, I think by my rough count, eliminating about 200 spaces from the total complex, right? And this is not an area that can support on-street parking in large volumes. And so, you know, I really want to dig into that prediction of your shared space and talk about what that means and whether we're likely to cause issues. For example, if we have, you know, what happens on holidays, what happens on snow days, rainy days, you know, things like that where, because if 90% of the days, it's fine, but 10% it's a problem, that's a lot of days with a problem. So I will want to dig in those. That's certainly not a comprehensive list, but those are the things that, you know, certainly looking at the proposal right away has really jumped out at me. Ms. Jacobs?
I'm just going to throw on, since you brought up the stormwater, just so the applicant understands where other board members stand. I am also incredibly concerned about stormwater. I know with Avalon, they did their own stormwater runoff reports, and my assumption can only be, when that went through planning, they did not see problems with stormwater or that was going to be adequately addressed, and obviously, it wasn't. So I'd want, I haven't gotten a chance to fully dive in and understand what they used for markers in the stormwater that they've done now, but I'm not going to want something that's just kind of the bare minimum, because I think the businesses in this area and the homes in this area were massively affected. And allowing for that to continue to happen is not going to be acceptable for an apartment complex.
It was, maybe it brings up like a point-of-order topic of conversation is, I've sort of been having a "how do you eat an elephant" moment this whole time when, you know, being asked, like, "Do you have any questions?" I have a ton of questions, but I'm not entirely sure what the best approach is, or is there an agreed-upon approach? Like, is this just to address the design and then we'll go through all these other points in serial?
Well, so this is not to address the design. We will have a whole nother day to discuss the design in depth. But I think this is a great way to set the stage with our applicants, so that if you have things in your head that you think are not going to be simply answerable with one sentence, that might need them to otherwise go back and dig in more, this is a great opportunity.
Okay. Well, I would add to your list, and it's not really in addition to the list, it's just a feature of the design that I think will affect multiple aspects of the list of sort of critical points, is the intended land clearance and subsequent landscaping that will tie into stormwater management, that will tie into how this affects the neighbors. Like, the first thing that stuck out for me with the, where it's moving closest to the property line is that all of those trees will be cut down, and there are no trees on the other lot. So that would mean no vertical landscaping between this new building and the neighbor. That feels abrupt. And there's now the construction of a steep wall right at the property line. So there are, and there are existing trees along Prescott facing the neighbor across the street. How, what is the plan to either keep those trees or plant new trees? Like, you know, those types of things, I think, are going to be kind of critical for how this impacts the neighbors. I mean, trees also sequester a lot of water. So, or was that, was the clearance of substantial amount of trees considered in the stormwater analysis? Like, those types of details, I would really like to get into when we get to those pieces.
Ms. Tessa, do you have anything you want to?
I'm good right now.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right. Well, I thank you for your presentation, and I think at this point, we're going to move to talking about peer reviews. But I'm, you know, looking forward to digging into this more. We're going to have a number of sessions, so this is definitely, for the public's understanding, this is not the last time that we are going to be discussing all these. This is just setting the table for the future discussions and for the in-depth discussions. All right, well, thank you. All right, Ms. Enright. I would love to bring you on to discuss what our plan is for peer reviews right now.
Sure. Hello, everyone. I'm Jeanne Enright, the Planning Director for the town. First, I just want to confirm, everybody can hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you great.
Okay, great. So I'm going to share with you kind of the Planning Board's typical peer review process for this type of project. My experience with peer review services are as follows, however, I will move in any direction that this board recommends, certainly. So as for stormwater design, the Planning Board has routinely used Horsley Witten as the stormwater peer review consultant. The review compares the proposed stormwater design compliance with the Mass Stormwater Handbook and the Town's Stormwater Management and Erosion Control Bylaw and Regulations. This consultant service is used for the vast majority of projects regarding, regardless of scope, and that means anywhere from an in-ground pool in the watershed to Amazon facility gets stormwater peer reviewed, you know, again, regardless of scope or size of project. Almost 99% go through a stormwater peer review, and Horsley Witten has been the consultant for several years now. As for civil review, for the past several years, the Planning Board's engaged with TEC for the peer review for civil plans. However, TEC has indicated that they're too busy currently to take on this project. The focus of the civil review will be on the general civil elements, adherence to local zoning, and site plan review requirements. So that's what they're looking at. They're looking at our existing bylaw, not that this project necessarily has to comply with all zoning requirements, but they will at least compare it and present it to you in terms of deviation for any existing zoning and site plan requirements. So currently, we've engaged with Hancock Associates, and they are providing civil review services for an Osgood Street commercial redevelopment that's currently before the Planning Board. Hancock was the town's civil peer review consultant for several years prior to TEC, but they decided to step away due to the fact that they were actually the project engineer team for development that was before the Planning Board at the time. And so once they stepped away, we kind of migrated to TEC, but it had no reflection on their performance as peer reviewers.
What development was that?
It was Princeton Properties.
Okay, so it was not the Avalon. I just wanted to check in on that.
No, Princeton Properties, which was permitted 2016.
Yeah.
And that was a combination of 192 units for Princeton as well as, I believe, 44,000 square feet of the commercial development, so it was all permitted as one site, and they were the project engineer at the time.
Got it.
Okay, so for traffic review, again, we had been using TEC. Same story, they're just too busy to take on this project at this time. So currently, VHB is acting as the peer review, commercial redevelopment project on Osgood Street that is currently before the Planning Board, and that's for a mixed-use first-floor commercial, three stories above for residential. It's a redevelopment of the Jimmy's Pizza parcel of land. So we've engaged with VHB for that parcel. VHB also conducted the traffic monitoring study that was required for the Avalon development across the street, so the 170-unit Avalon building. The Planning Board conditioned a traffic study one year out and two years out, and VHB did that monitoring study for the board. So they're really quite familiar with this area of the town. So those are the three that, for this scale project, the Planning Board would engage with, stormwater, civil, and traffic. An additional layer is water sewer design. So the Amazon facility and the Princeton property, due to their location and their design of water sewer, the DPW had requested water sewer design peer review. And Tim Molet is the water sewer manager. He's requested it again for this site. He uses a company called Wooded and Curran, and he's recommending that they, again, are engaged with this project. And so those four are primarily the ones we've experienced in my tenure anyways. We've not specifically hired consultants for landscaping or architectural plan review. That being said, the project is located within the downtown overlay historic mill area. It's called Sub District A, and that has its own unique bylaw, and that bylaw provides for landscaping requirements, design guidelines such as building orientation, articulations, curb cuts, transition in height, density scale, intensity of use from the existing mill buildings to the neighborhood. And so that would be part of a normal civil review. Those type of components would be reviewed. That bylaw also has specific site design guidelines, and those are urban design features, architectural features, onsite and offsite improvements. So again, those things are all touched upon within the bylaw, and that's what civil matches up against. And in addition, they also have site and design standards. So rather than guidelines, there's standards such as site access, parking, bicycle accommodations, pedestrian accommodation, noise light, things like that are all standards within the bylaw. Again, a standard isn't, you know, you must do, and the guideline isn't you must do, but there is at least a framework that we expect an applicant to work within. So again, we could make sure, if we're going to ask for a scope for civil, that they're aware of that bylaw in addition to the normal site plan requirements. I will note that the applicant's attorney has requested, has questioned whether the board would consider having Horsley Witten, who I've mentioned typically does our stormwater peer review, perform both the civil as well as the stormwater review. He's indicated that they have done that for other municipalities. However, as far as I'm aware, Horsley Witten has not done that for the town of North Andover, not that they're not capable, I'm just not experienced with their civil type review.
What would be the advantage of doing, of having them do both? No, no, I'm asking Jeanne.
Yeah, again, the attorney's perspective is more efficient. It comes down to their staffing levels and, you know, whether they can take on both. It wouldn't be the same core people within Horsley Witten, so they'd have a division that would handle traffic and, I'm sorry, civil in a division that handles stormwater. It would just be subbed out to two different parts of the organization.
Okay.
For peer reviews and, sorry, Frank, do you want to?
Well, stormwater is part of civil design. So when they design it, the civil engineers are designing the site as well as the stormwater system. So in the peer review, they're just as capable of doing that.
For peer review, is part of the peer review, or can it be comparing the, as we sort of alluded to earlier, comparing the results of previous studies for similar developments in the area to the studies that they're reviewing? developments in the area to the studies that they're reviewing, or is that a separate process that we would request?
Um, if I, I'm not sure I understood correctly, but something like a traffic peer review, they often ask for how, what other traffic studies have been done in the area.
Okay.
And again, I think that's somewhat of an advantage for VHB because they did kind of peer review the results of the traffic study that was presented for the Avalon development.
Gotcha.
But that's the only one that I can say, would reach out and say, what other developments have happened, and can you share their traffic study?
Yeah, I think, um, was it you or Alex who mentioned that they would wanna compare the actual results of the impact on traffic? Huh?
The predicted versus the actual.
Right.
Yeah.
One of you brought it up, but I wasn't sure if that was part of the peer review process or specifically requested separate item.
So I'll say, for this type of project, the planning board almost always conditions a follow-up, a year after occupancy, that a monitoring study is done to compare the results pre, that they, they presented at the time of permitting, what their predictions were and what the actual results are. And we're, actually, at the next planning board meeting, we are presenting that study for the Amazon facility.
So I think we wanna know what, how that compared for the, uh, for the Avalon traffic study. What was the, the predicted, uh, traffic versus what was the actual that they did a couple of years later?
Yep, so two were done, I think, if I remember correctly, a year and two years out, and I can send those to Terry, and she can include them in your meeting packet.
Fantastic.
Yeah, and maybe we'll, maybe we'll pull in somebody to talk about it a little bit.
From whoever did the study?
Yeah. Either whoever did the study or someone on the board.
Planning.
Yeah, I'll, we'll figure that out. Um, Jean, um, in terms of the behind-the-scenes logistics, so obviously, we can't as a board be conversing with the, with the peer reviewer en masse, because that would be an open meeting violation, but we also can't have, you know, 12 meetings to, to discuss that.
Well, you don't wanna add 12 meetings, so that's just...
Well, if you want, we can, we can make it happen. Um, so, in, is it typical that there's, that there's a point person, you know, either the chair or someone else that would converse with these peer reviewers and have conversations beforehand to, to plan out what the, what we want in that peer review?
Well, they present, and the board as a whole can review those, they can delegate it to yourself if you wanna review those, um, and work with me to fine-tune them, but pretty much the proposal's gonna lay out their scope of work.
Okay.
And how many meetings they might attend. Typically, they plan for one meeting, but there's always interaction between the peer reviewer and the applicant.
Yeah.
Again, for planning, I just always ask that I'm copied on any communications, but there are phone calls and, and, you know, the kind of workout between the two of them.
Okay. So in other words, it's pretty hands-off until they come to present to us, that we, we hire them for the peer review, and then, um, then they, they go away and they do their thing, and then they come and they present it to us, and that's our chance to, to interact with it.
Yes, so typically, they'll write their first peer review letter, the applicant will respond to that letter, and then at some point, the, both will present to the board.
Okay.
Well, can we see that scope of work, uh, you know, before it's finalized, in case we wanna add to it or modify it?
That, that's up to the board, whatever direction you want to agree to, I can, I can solicit.
Yeah, I think we just wanna understand, understand what they think their scope of work is compared to what we think it should be.
Or what we'd be expecting to be getting, and then possibly wait two months to get results, to find out that we're not getting the thing that we thought we would.
Right. Yeah, I think we wanna avoid that situation.
Yeah.
I think the, the flip side is that I assume that you do not have those scopes now for any of those committees, for any of those peer reviews.
So I did a couple of weeks ago, send out to the, the people I mentioned.
Yeah.
Just to try to get ahead of this a little bit, because obviously, you know, time's, time is of essence. So I did receive a proposal for stormwater, and I've received a proposal for traffic.
Okay.
Um, that just came about an hour before this meeting, so I haven't really gone through the traffic one. Um, but I do have those two, and like I said, I've solicited one for civil, that's not in yet, but again, whether you want one, whether you want two, with, uh, whether you wanna review them, or like I said, delegate to the chair to review it, whatever, whatever direction you wanna go in.
Yeah, well, and so I think that is a, a thing that I wanna open up to the board. So we have basically a couple of choices here. So one is that, um, that we, that we handle the approval of these offline, and so it is, you guys are allowed to delegate to me, for example, the approval of those. Um, I would recommend that even with that, that I, that you folks be able to see the, the scope and be able to give feedback on that. Um, but it, it, it would be basically just me deciding, okay, this is gonna, we're gonna go no-go for these ones. The other option would be that we have another meeting in basically two or three weeks' time, and, um, and then we decide, we review them publicly and we discuss them that way. Um, I feel like that second option is a little less than desirable just from a managing the, the flow of things standpoint. I think it'll be, it would be nice to be able to get moving on these as quickly as possible, 'cause that way, that ticking clock of 180 days, we can start moving on the traffic review, which I think will take something like four weeks, and we wanna be able to get that through, and then get, you know, interaction with the, with the applicant, um, and so then we can give the, the notice and have our meeting probably late January.
Well, I guess, uh, my question would be, is it possible to have a simple, like, way of giving feedback for, um, or asking questions about what the proposals mean without...
Without breaking open meeting laws.
Right.
So this is maybe our, our question for some of our legal counsel here, what options we have that do not cause problems.
Well, one thing, I, I know we wanna move this along, um, so that you can tee up the next substantive meeting, but, but one thing just to be clear about, these are peer reviews.
Yeah.
So I, I know there's been some discussion about the scope or tweaking the scope. If you're thinking about, well, you wanna tweak the scope to, to make sure that your peer reviewer's proposal includes attendance at one or two ZBA meetings, that's fine, but they're not gonna go off and conduct their own studies.
Okay.
So, uh, it, it is kind of a limited scope.
Okay.
Um, they're basically looking at, for example, the traffic, did they look at the right intersections? Um, did they use the right methodologies, the right land use codes, things like that?
So they're relying on the other, their consultant's traffic count?
Exactly, the consultants, yeah, the consultant's report is going to be the main report, if you will, that drives it. Your peer review consultant will really just look at that and say, you know, we agree with it, we think they used the reasonable and professional methods, um, for this evaluation. They might make some recommendations and say, but, you know, like often, for example, in traffic, um, often your peer reviewer will come back and say, well, they looked at these four intersections, but we'd suggest they look at that fifth intersection, or they looked at this, um, you know, in the, in February during school vacation week. We, we recommend that they go back out when school is in session, for example. Um, so there might be some things like that, that your peer reviewer would come back with, but...
But not conducting their own.
No.
No, they're, they're not gonna go out there and count vehicles on their own, they're gonna take the data, for example, from the, from the primary report.
Yeah, they're not conducting a study, they're, you know, essentially road testing the study itself and how well it was conducted according to their expertise. I guess what I'm wondering is, like, is there anything in the proposal typically that would say, um, we see that they use this methodology to do this study, but these methodologies have been more, more accurate in this area? Like, is that part of, just sort of standard part of peer review?
That typically is, yes, yep.
Okay.
You know, if they think, for example, that there is a different methodology, they might even go back to the, the engineer, the traffic engineer, whomever it might happen to be, they might go back to their counterpart and say, well, you use this method, but this other method might be more appropriate for this site or, you know, the community of North Andover.
Gotcha.
Um, and then it's up to the developer to decide, well, do they wanna go back and run the data using that methodology, for example?
Right.
Okay.
And in theory, if it came up, and I'm not saying it will, so do not know yet, but if the town wanted to do an independent study of any of these things, that's a separate process from peer review, correct?
Yeah, I guess, and I would say that's sort of unusual. I don't know if, uh...
That's what I said in theory.
Judy might have a, a different, I mean, 'cause one thing to bear in mind, the peer review is paid for by the developer. You know, that is always a, um, you know, something to sort of level the playing field for, for the zoning board to have, you know, some of their own expertise or own eyes providing some expertise. If you want some study done, or additional study or supplemental study done, um, I'm not gonna speak for the, for the applicant, but I'd be willing to bet the applicant would not agree to something like that. They'd say, you go right ahead and you do that, and that might, that's now on the town's dime.
The town's dime, sure. Interesting.
Okay, um, so I think with that, well, that's, oh, go ahead.
Well, I had also asked about, and Jeanne mentioned, uh, architectural review, that you don't necessarily have with someone, but is that something that we can have done under this?
And landscaping too, but, I'm gonna let Judy go for a little bit.
Yeah.
In light of some of the comments that have been made, I, I think that's something you're gonna wanna consider.
Okay.
So Jeanne, do you just not have contacts for that, or is that something that you needed chased down, or do you need input from others?
I can, I can give Jeanne some names if she wants.
Yeah, I can work with Judy on that. Is it both architect and landscaping you're interested in, or...
I, I had asked for architectural and...
Yeah.
I, I think we asked, yeah.
So collectively, yes.
Yes.
Um, so given the, the, the limited leeway we have in choosing what the peer reviewers will be working on, are folks, oh, sorry, is there, um, sure, Mr. Smalling?
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. So we have, we have absolutely no problem with, uh, the consultants that have been identified by, by Jeanne. And I, I would suggest, however, a couple of things first. If possible, if we could see a, a copy of the scope, not that we'll be able to influence it, but at least we wanna see what that scope might entail so that we can share that with our, uh, professionals as well to, to examine it.
Sure.
That's one item. The other item is, uh, possibility of using, um, Horsley-Witten, as, as Jeanne had indicated, uh, for both civil and stormwater, if the board's willing to at least consider or entertain that.
So, so what is your feeling on that? 'Cause I, I don't understand what the, the big difference is between having it be one and having it be two from an outcome perspective.
Well, I, I think it's, uh, we've, uh, folks in our team have had experience with Horsley-Witten, uh, evaluating both civil and stormwater, and we think that from an economies of scale standpoint, even though they may be in a different department, they're, you're gonna have, uh, I would think, a consistent review between the consultants within the own company, within their own company. And so, uh, for that reason, uh, we feel that it's a, a more efficient process to have one consultant do both.
I mean, I, so, thinking it through from my perspective, right, to some degree, having some heterogeneity is perhaps a good thing, right? That, I, I understand that the idea of consistency, that, that, that they're going to look at things the same way, right? And that from an efficiency of the review standpoint, that makes sense. I think from my perspective, what I would want, would, would, to me, it's a feature to have more eyes on it and more perspectives on it. And, so, I, I, I go back and forth both ways.
Does it make a difference that it would be more, or like, different eyes on different items? Like, it's not like we're getting a, you know, second and third opinion on the same item.
No, we're not, but it's, I think, I think to Mr. Smallak's point, that having one reviewer for multiple subjects means that they kind of all fit together seamlessly.
Gotcha.
Right? And some, you know, I'm not sure that that's, I don't know from our perspective if that's a feature or a buck.
Gotcha.
I don't, I don't have a, have a good...
The site design is so linked with the, the drainage, you know, your, your grading impacts your drainage, your, your, uh, impervious surface impacts that, so, to, for one person to be looking at it independently of the other, then you...
If you change one, it'll have impacts on the other that they're not accounting for.
And we might end up with a peer review that says, this looks good, raises a lot of questions for the other.
Sure.
And that they won't be able to answer.
Yep. No, that's, that's a reasonable point.
So, so if, if the board's willing to just consider that even, entertaining a scope, and then let the board decide whether they want to go in either direction?
Jeanne, would you be willing to, to reach out, and then we, we, at least then we can have that in front of us and make that decision?
Yep, so get a proposal from both Hancock as well as Horsley-Witten.
Yeah. Yeah, well, at least we'll take a look at it. And I guess the, the question then before the board is, do, do you guys feel comfortable, um, having me be the, be the person who decides this, or do we want to...
Do you feel comfortable being the person who decides?
Right, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, but it's a lot on you.
Yeah, I, I can make that, I can do that. Um, I, you know, I, I'm, will lean on, um, Jeanne and Judy to, to help out a little bit with that, but, um, but I think, but I think I can handle it. I mean, the, the bigger, I think the advantage of it is that we don't have to have a whole nother meeting for it, right? 'Cause I feel like we basically end up having a half-hour meeting where we don't actually discuss all that much, and we just kind of come in to approve it, and I feel like it would probably save everybody a lot of energy if I...
And we might have all the proposals in by Thanksgiving, but then the meeting might not be for two or three weeks.
Exactly, and it delays everything, right? And so, to, I think there's an advantage to, to getting moving on this reasonably quickly.
Um, I mean, I have total faith in you, Mike.
Well, that's very kind of you, but, uh, yeah, you know, it's more just a matter of, do you, do you, if you foresee having, needing to have input, then, then it's maybe worth having that meeting, but if you feel like we can just go, then let's just go.
Mm-hmm.
So do, would someone be willing to, to make a motion to that effect?
Make a motion to give Mike the authority to select the peer reviewers.
There we go.
Seconded.
All right, um, I'm gonna do a roll call just 'cause we have, we're doing hybrid. Ms. Jacobs?
Hi.
All right, Mr. Kilala?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Tessa?
Yes.
And I'm an I, all right.
Melissa.
So, um...
Mr. Small, can I just add one thing to that?
Yeah.
Um, just one thing to bear in mind, that, um, the applicant does have a right to challenge any selected peer reviewer on the basis of either qualifications or a possible conflict.
Okay.
I, I don't expect that we're going to have an issue with qualifications, I assume we're gonna locate, um, people who are amply qualified in their fields, but you won't necessarily know if there's a potential conflict, say, with the architectural or landscape firm, so one interim step will be, just, there's gotta be some coordination of running that through the applicant.
Well, and Mr. Smallak indicated that he wanted to know the scope anyways.
Right.
And so, to me, those, those can be done at the same time, right?
Yeah, to provide that information.
And so, yeah, and so we'll, we'll, we'll at least have that, um, yes, no, that, thank you for that reminder, that's a good point.
Especially since all of these firms have been utilized by the planning board in town before, I'm not too concerned about qualifications.
Right, no, I think the...
The architecture and landscape one, that...
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's already said okay to the other names.
I, I think, yeah, I think conflict is just the one to make sure of, that we're not creating any kind of issues there, 'cause we would not want the conflict either, so I think, I think that would be good for all of us. All right.
And I think that Attorney Murray clarified the, the issue of, on traffic in terms of studies and so on. Um, I just wanted to mention specifically with respect to traffic, which might be the, you know, if the board was willing to do that, that might be the next topic for the next meeting.
Yes.
Uh, so we'd love to get that going as soon as we can. Uh, the only other comment I would make in terms of the studies that were done on other projects, those, the, that's helpful to, to look at, that information, but our traffic study is done by, in some circumstances, a different traffic engineer, based on traffic counts that were taken certain time period, and so it might be comparing apples and oranges.
There's a natural variance.
Right, right.
Yes, absolutely, but, uh, you know, I think there's a difference between a 5% variance and a 40% variance.
Right, right.
Right, and if there's a 40% variance, then we should figure out why it was so different when those measurements were made. But, uh, but yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Um, all right, with that, um, we are moving on to the public comment phase. So I think the way we're gonna do this, Mr. Kilala, if you'd be willing to grab the... So I think the way we're going to do this, Mr. Kilala, if you'd be willing to grab the, the list.
The list.
The list, I think we're going to try to go in order of that list, just to prevent a traffic jam from hitting us on the way to the podium. All right, so I only have five names on here. I'm going to write them down, and I will put that list over there, just so that if, if there are more folks, yeah, but then I'm going to be staring at my phone the whole time.
It's good to write things down from time to time.
Could anyone else during the discussion?
Hmm?
People filled that out when they came in, right? So during this discussion, someone else may have.
Right. Put, put a name on.
Yep.
Well, that's why the list is going to go back over there.
All right. So, so I would encourage folks, if you do want to speak and you have not yet put your name down on the list, I'd encourage you to go up and do so, so that way we can make sure that everyone who wants to speak gets covered. Given that we don't have a huge list right now, I think we can give five minutes for everybody, so we're going to have a nice clock here so you can see how much time you have. I'm going to, I'm going to ask people to do their best to try to stay to this. I know that there are a lot of points that you guys want to get across, and if you aren't able to get everything across, please email us. It is really helpful for us to have every bit of those details. I would encourage you, if you hear someone else say something that is your thing, try to be really, really brief. You don't need to, to repeat that in depth, just because it has now been covered. And I do also encourage folks, I know I'm learning this process as well as, as you are, to, to look at some of the, the features that are specifically available and not available, and think about shaping your comments relative to those as much as possible. That, that there are, we, we have limited powers in this situation, and so, for example, one of the things that we don't really have the power to do is say, "No, you can't build anything," right? That is, that is really not an option to us, so the, as much as possible, think about the ways that we can make this better fit the community, fit the neighborhood, and, and match what will make the environment the most livable for everybody. So with that, the first person on the list is Michael Ronain. Am I pronouncing your name correctly, sir? Awesome. All right, so please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Ronain, address 24 Prescott Street. My house is directly across the street from the proposed complex. I have a bunch of serious concerns, so I'll try and speed through these a bit, but, machine shop village is a unique and historic part of North Andover. The scale and density of the housing development could alter its character. The residential buildings would not only be inconsistent with the existing pattern of development in the village, they would alter the small-town identity and overshadow the older buildings, tainting the historic atmosphere. The development would dramatically increase the number of residents and vehicles in the area. This would place strain on local infrastructure and threaten the quality of life for both current and future residents. Hundreds of additional vehicles would lead to congestion, frustration, and gridlock, and it would alter the neighborhood from calm and welcoming to hectic and stressful. Commute times would surely lengthen, and a new flow of traffic would increase noise levels. For existing residents, the enormous developments would block sunlight, reduce privacy, and replace open views and green space with towering structures and constant activity. Where's now a peaceful area would feel overcrowded and overbuilt, with more noise from tenants and constant movement in and around the property. While there are already apartment complexes in the broader area, those developments are set back from the main roads and do not intrude on the open, inviting feel of the mills. This, by contrast, would sit predominantly within view. I also have concerns about the impact on property values. The introduction of a large, high-density rental complex would change perception of the area's stability and desirability, particularly for those living in nearby single-family homes. While these long-term impacts would come from, there would also be long-term impacts from the construction. There would be heavy machinery, dust, debris, and constant noise that would bother nearby residents, making life stressful and unpleasant. Access to streets and sidewalks could be limited, while vibrations, dirt, and construction traffic would create persistent disturbances. The construction site phase alone would strip away much of the peace and comfort that the current residents enjoy. The current apartments of RCG LLC, the East Mills and West Mill buildings, do at least retain their historic brick-and-beam look, which makes them less visually intrusive than the proposed new development. However, the reviews from tenants on these complexes indicate genuine displeasure and a variety of persistent problems. On ApartmentRatings.com, the East Mills holds a 2.6 out of 5 star rating. Additionally, on Google reviews, RCG LLC and Somerville, which represents many of their local properties, holds a 2.9 out of 5 star rating. And the East Mills tenants note that management responsiveness is weak, noise from neighboring units, and commercial uses penetrate thin walls, and that parking or access issues persist. Plagued with 1 and 2 star reviews, RCG LLC tenants express extreme displeasure with communication, unreasonable fees and charges, bare minimum build quality, and turnover of occupants that undermines a sense of long-term stability. Given these shortcomings in the existing RCG-managed properties, the proposed larger development could easily replicate these issues on a much larger scale. I urge all you to look at the reviews of RCG LLC on Google and the East Mills on ApartmentRatings.com. On a personal level, this proposed development strikes at the heart of what brought me to this community. If a development proceeds, I will lose the privacy I value, the value of the downtown and wooded areas that I enjoy, and the simple convenience of being a five-minute drive from the train. The quiet, peaceful character of this community will be replaced with constant presence of the new buildings, increased noise, and a sense of urban density that I specifically moved here to avoid. This development would specifically drop the city into our neighborhood. Had I known this development would have been proposed, I would not have purchased this house or devoted the last year and a half to making it my own. I know that many others in the community share the same sentiment. In fact, this development could deter future residents, just as it would have deterred me had I known about it. Development that respects the village's history, scale, and environment will be far more welcome and sustainable in the long run. The main concern should be that of the current residents, and decisions should be made that are in our best interest. Like myself, my neighbors are extremely displeased and upset with this proposition. On top of that, the project would essentially allow a company that has an unfavorable reputation, to say the least, to completely transform the machine shop village. Thank you for letting me speak.
Next is Ms. Hutchings.
I'll make, I'll make it brief.
Just name and address for your.
Oh, my name's Helen Hutchings, in Matt's Sixth Walker Road.
Thank you.
Directly where this is going to take place.
Yeah.
I already lived through one of these, when the Avalon just went up, and it was very, very noisy, and it took years. I had very unhappy neighbors. I've lived through the flood. I, I wasn't directly affected by the flood, but my whole building was, and it took years to, to fix it, and it's still ongoing. We still have pictures of all those floodwaters, and I walked around the Avalon buildings, and I know they've, they've dug trenches and everything like that, you know, to try to mitigate it, but if there's another flood, that water is still going to build up again, you know? And the noise is going to be, it's going to be a lot, and I was wondering what you, what they plan on doing about a wall, or something like that was mentioned? I don't know, if anything like that.
Yeah, well, that, and that'll definitely be part of the civil review, but it is good to have that on the record here, that that's a major concern.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not real good at speaking, so.
No, no.
You know, I just wanted to make sure, you know, the sound is going to be quite a bit, and then the traffic and the flooding and everything, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Hakim.
Good evening. My name is Michael Hakim. Address is 12 Lothrup Street in Beverly, Mass, but I'm here representing my son and his family, who reside at 55 Prescott Street, directly abutting the, the subject site. Their backyard abuts, you know, abuts, well, Prescott. Reason I'm here representing them is because I've spent my entire career as a professional planner and professional landscape architect, licensed in both fields, and I'm more familiar with the issues. The overriding concern that we have is the preservation of the integrity of the Prescott Street neighborhood and other surrounding residential areas. This development encroaches too close, in our opinion, to, certainly to the first house on, on Prescott, and then the next two as well. What we would like to see is, do we have a concern with building height? Yes. Do we have a concern with density? You know, this development is almost 50 units to the acre, on six acres, and I don't think North Andover has seen any other development of that level of density. That's a real urban-type density. So we'd like to see lower density, we'd like to see lower height, but mostly, we would like to see more setback from the property lines, of the rear property lines of the homes along Prescott Street. We're concerned also about intrusion into their private lives, and that intrusion can come in the form of visual intrusion. They use their backyards, that's where they live, and without a solid opaque fence that prevents peering through into their living space, that would be an intrusion into their, the integrity of their properties. But also, the, any, if you would envision just any resident of this building who might desire to have a destination up Prescott Street, one, the one option that they would have, legal option they would have, is to go down to High Street, wrap around the corner, and go up the, the Prescott Street hill. It's kind of circuitous and, and a lengthy walk. What's more likely to happen without a solid barrier preventing trespassing is trespassing, and people do it today. There are people who are in other parts of this, this greater site, who travel through the, the backyards out to Prescott Street through private properties. My family has, my son, his wife, and five children. They're young, they play in the yard, and certainly, they're concerned about security and privacy as well. So there are a lot of other issues. I appreciate that this is an overview and an introduction to these hearings. I reserve all the more detailed comments for other times. I intend, to the best of my ability, to be here. I'm not, and I want to make clear that I'm not making these comments as professional expert testimony, because I'm retired for eight and a half years, and I let my licenses lapse, as most retired people do. So it's just simply, as a knowledgeable and experienced person in these fields, professional in these fields for 45 years, I think I have a lot of insight into what they could do. I did take the opportunity, and I want to thank Mr. Steinberg for meeting with me and briefly showing me some of their more developed plans. I'm going to go on the website and look at them in more detail. But I guess that's really about it. I, I intend to come and talk in more detail when the time is appropriate, at the appropriate meeting.
I look forward to having you here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Ms. English.
Carla English, 93 Prescott Street.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, so I've lived on Prescott Street for 20 years. When we moved here, it was really quiet, lovely. Things have really changed, and not for the better. I'd like to say that the current Avalon buildings, although I'm not happy with the traffic, at least they're set back. So it's really not equivalent to talk about Avalon buildings and then talk about your building, because I can't see them, they are so far back, I have to, you know, go into a parking lot and walk a bit to see them. So right there, that's a big difference. When you walk down Prescott Street, there are 13 single-family homes on the side that will end at this building. Many of those homes are one-story or a story and a half, mostly craftsmen bungalows and a few ranches and a couple colonials. It's very quaint. On the other side of the street, there are 11 single-family homes. Most of them are very small, some are a story and a half. There's one multifamily home on that side of the street. My lot has a three-quarter of an acre. My neighbor one over has an acre and a quarter, open space, then woods, so you get the feeling of what our street is like. So now I'm going to walk down my street, and there's going to be a five-story, two-acre building at the bottom. That does not fit the neighborhood. The scale of this proposed building is absolutely absurd. It's not a bad building, but it's absurd for that site. If you look at what's surrounding it in the mills, and when you pulled up that schematic, what really hit me was the lack of open space in relation to your building, and how it, it just was so much bigger than everything else. So there's something wrong with the scale of your project. It's not just that it doesn't fit on Prescott Street, and that we need a lot of setback and a lot of buffering. If you buffered something really well, and it was smaller, and maybe not five stories, and I, you know, we could probably all live with it, but the way you have it right now, it's just, it's ridiculous. I just wanted to say that I feel like, you know, you can, you can run traffic studies, but the real people that know are the people that live on Prescott Street, and we're actually considering moving because, before we knew about your project, because the amount of traffic that we have now, the noise, and it's not just the amount of cars, it's like now we have cars with mufflers banging, and we have cars speeding. The neighborhood is changing rapidly because of the amount of high-density housing you have there, and I know we need housing, and that's a perfectly fine thing to work toward, but there's, there's a place for everything, and the scale of your building belongs on, like Route 114 or Route 125, with a large area around it. And let me just see if I missed anything here. Sorry, I didn't come with notes, I just, yeah, I just really hope that you reconsider what you're doing, because, you know, I know this is a business proposition, and people are going to make a lot of money, but in the end, you're really destroying a neighborhood, and, you know, we do need affordable housing, and I hope we get affordable housing, but not at all costs. My last question is, though, what can homeowners do to petition the state housing board? Because I have a feeling that their goal needs to be met, but not at all costs, and I don't know that the housing board in Massachusetts is aware of exactly what's going on here, and do homeowners have a right to gather, you know, and represent themselves to sort of knock on a door and say, "Hey?"
Yeah, please direct your questions at me, by the way.
Oh, sorry, I was thinking.
Everything should come to me, not, not to other members.
All right, sorry. Is there a way for homeowners to gather and, you know, sort of appeal? Is there a way for homeowners to gather and, you know, sort of appeal, or at least make their concerns known?
So it's a worthwhile question for Ms. Murray. Is that, are there ways for citizens to discuss it? I know that, you know, the town had its feedback, and that that was part of the process that the state went into with the decision. Are there any other places that citizens can talk to the state about?
Well, if it's about this specific project, this is where you come, and voice your concerns, and see if there's a way that maybe the project can be shaped, mitigated. We'll see how this all unfolds. There is also a process that, assuming, and we're getting a little ahead of ourselves, but assuming if this board ultimately grants a comprehensive permit for this project, abutters, there is a mechanism to appeal to court.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you, Ms. Murray. All right, Ms. Sarni.
Hi, my name is Kelly Sarni, and my husband Andrew and I live at 39 Prescott Street. We are the direct abutter that is most impacted by this development. First, we would like to thank the zoning board for this opportunity to speak. We ask that you closely look at the design and the waivers. This will be a long process, and we are hoping that everyone will be heard, and a mutual approved plan can proceed. Secondly, we appreciate very much that Mr. Steinberg reached out to us and met with us. He seems willing to work with us to make this project work for all of us. He's a very smart and savvy businessman. I give him and his team kudos for using the 40B in order to submit this project. This 40B processes bypasses a lot of normal processes that go through these various boards in this town. We are not naive. We knew eventually a development would be proposed. Did we think it would be 296 units? That looks like four stories from the back, our view, and five stories from the front, no. We are not opposed to 40B housing or development, but not at this size. My husband and I feel 296 units in five stories is too big. It is on six acres. Examples of other sizes, Sutton Pond, 188 units. Avalon Bay, built in 2022, has 221 units over nine acres. The largest 40B project in town was Woodridge Homes, that has 250 units over 30 acres. Also recently developed is the now Haven, formerly Princeton, built in 2019, has 192 units, and 505 Sutton, built in 2022, has 136 units. Another apartment building is being built on the corner of Main and Second Streets. Great growth for the town for sure, but it is in such a confined space of town. Mr. Chairperson, I heard you say you are a strong advocate for apartments during another hearing. That is fine, but the town didn't do their due diligence when approving these recent apartment developments. Per the in-town of North Andover Housing Production Plan 2018 to 2022, we were at 8.5% of affordable housing. If we added just 55 units a year, we would have reached the 10.3% by 2021. If we added 109 units per year, we would have reached 10.3 by 2019. According to the town hall staff and the 2020 data, we are at 7.99%. RCG has it as 8.12% in their permit. How does a town go down in percentage with so many new developments over the past seven years? The inclusionary bylaw went into effect in 2022 and amended in 2023. Very happy to see this approved, but it was a reactive approach as opposed to a proactive. It is documented in other recent development meeting minutes that multiple concerned residents asked if any of these units, especially in Avalon, in Sutton, in Princeton, were going to be affordable. The answer was no. The town does not have to use this project to get to its 10% quota at the expense of this one project. We ask that you look very closely at the waivers, especially dimensions for both setbacks and height. As you know, you have the power to accept or decline each waiver. You also don't have to give an answer right away if you need more time to think about it. If you grant these waivers, this project will be 16.5 feet away from our property line. It will impact the resale price of our home. We only have 0.29 acres of property. We ask for the green space we are entitled to. We prefer the development not move any closer to our property. Currently, we have a difficult sightline out of our driveway due to the trees, that are pretty much all dead. And the building, which will be higher than our house, will make that sight even worse. Upon reviewing the plans, we are concerned about a sidewalk that leads to Prescott Street. We are also concerned about the parking garage. We have had to call police many times for activities taking place in the current parking garage. We are concerned about the new parking garage and what type of activity may occur due to the new size of it. There has been recent installation of cameras at the corner of Elm, Water, and High Streets, High and Prescott Street, and High and Sutton Street. We have seen cameras elsewhere in the town, mostly seem to be at major intersections or highly congested areas. We will continue to share more concerns as the hearings continue. Lastly, we ask that you put yourself as if you live in our house. Again, our goal is to find a mutually attractive plan that works for all of us. Thank you for this opportunity to voice our concerns.
Thank you. Do we have any additional names that have been added to the list? Please.
My name is Betsy Cody, I live at 116 High Street. I have Avalon in my backyard. And since the intersection of the end of High Street and Sutton Street, I've almost been in, I won't even say how many accidents. People coming down Sutton go to take a left where they're not supposed to take a left, because it's so poorly designed and marked. You have people coming at all these stop signs, you're going to add another 200 cars? I have grandchildren now, I can't even walk them on my street, because I'm afraid cars go 50 miles an hour. Now you want to put another 200? I'll be able to see that apartment complex from my house, and that's sad. Now, I feel bad for her, I had to put all curtains up. Avalon did give us money for fencing, which I appreciated. And I don't think Avalon, I think this will be much worse than Avalon. But, you know, at night, I have to make sure I shut my curtains, because I can wave to my neighbors out back. We just can't do it, you just, I'm 72 years old, soon to be 73, and hopefully I will not be here when this is built. But where am I going to go? Sell my house, where am I going to go? I'll probably go to Main.
All right, thank you. I was not going to, yeah, but. Do you have a comment there? Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of them were from folks that have spoken today. But I do think, and I'll talk with maybe Andrew Shapiro, maybe there's a way that we can post the letters on the website. I think that might be helpful, because I think that'll be a good way to make sure that everyone can read them. Certainly, I will make sure that the board members have them, and that we consider them as we talk to folks. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? All right, so with that, I thank everybody, and as Mr. Hakim said, this is just the beginning, and so there will be lots more opportunities for folks to come in and speak, and speak in more detail on each particular topic as we go through it. We will do our best to make sure that as much advance notice as possible is posted on the website of the dates and the subjects. We don't have those right now, in part because we don't have the peer reviews chosen, and we don't have their timeline. So we don't have the ability to set up a date right now. But most likely, there's not going to be a meeting in December. I do not think that we have any business before the peer reviews start coming in to discuss before then. And so there will be normal zoning board meetings, but there will not be one for the 40B likely in December, and will likely move out to January, when the first of the peer reviews, most likely traffic, as Mr. Small I indicated, will come in. Is there anything else that the?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes.
If you don't continue the hearing to a date certain tonight, then you'd have to re-advertise.
Right.
Ah, okay.
So you might want to reserve a date in January here.
All right, Ms. McNeil. We talked about January 20th. Is that an, is that an acceptable date?
Yes, the senior center.
Okay, great, senior center's great, lots of space. All right, so then, with that in mind, with the board's permission, I would like to continue to January 20th. At 7 o'clock.
Was that on the email chain? Have we discussed that date, or are we just?
We have not, I have not discussed that date with you.
That's based on availability of.
That was availability of rooms, and also the time, the expected timeline for when we think that the traffic peer review would be ready for us.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with the 20th. My only thought is if anyone is going away for Martin Luther King Weekend, that is the day after, I don't know.
Ms. Jacobs, Ms. Rutherford, are you folks okay with that date?
20th is fine for me.
Okay.
Could you remote in, on your snowmobile?
Okay, all right.
Melissa, could you give a thumbs up? We can't seem to hear you, but is the thumbs up or a thumbs down on the 20th of January?
Thumbs up, all right.
It's okay for me.
All right, so do we have a motion to continue?
Make the motion to continue till January 20th, 2026, at 7:00 p.m.
Seconded.
All right, Ms. Jacobs.
That's fine.
Mr. Testa.
Aye.
Ms. Cohen.
Aye.
Mr. Collier.
Yes.
And I am an aye, all right. Thank you, everybody, and we'll see you then.
Well, I was going to ask one more thing, Mr. Chair. Do you want to set the topic for the 20th? Do you want to confirm that as, say, being a discussion of traffic, or?
Yes, yes, that will be the traffic review.
Okay.
As long as we can get that in, that'll be the traffic. Great.
I'm sure if you make that the date, it will happen.
Okay.
Oh. Was public comment?
Wait a minute.
What?
Did that close it for the whole duration of?
I thought the meeting.
No, just for the meeting, right?
Oh, okay. I don't know if we have to do Robert's Reverser at quite that level, but okay, sure. Do you want to just quickly do it?
Motion to close public comment?
Wait a second, just to close the comment.
Just for today.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Do we have to make a motion of adjourn as well?
Yes, go for it.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
No, break, don't even joke.
All right.
It's a majority vote.